I'd like to call in, back into order, the Board of Commissioners meeting. We took a small recess until 5:30 and to allow people from the neighborhood around Cedar Ridge and Robinson Avenue to appear. We have offered an opportunity for people from the neighborhood that's affected by the Robinson Avenue issue and the closure of that right-of-way, people to express their opinions and ideas that we might have. I want to thank Magistrate Tony Payne for being here. It's in his district and we thank you for coming to participate with us tonight. We're going to do one quick thing first. I want to ask City Engineer Melissa Kanzler if she would go through a little brief chronology to, so that they know why we are where we are, and then we'll take some comments from you. Ms. Kanzler?
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I'll be very brief, but just want to talk a little bit about the CSX closure at Robinson Avenue and how it came to be.
Can you hear her in the back?
I can see that.
Turning it up, son?
Good.
Mark?
Can you hear me okay? Is that good?
Yeah, it's better.
Okay, I'll lean forward. I was contacted initially by CSX in early February regarding a meeting to be held on site regarding a siding extension plans that they had at the intersection with Old Morgantown Road, a roadway that carries 8,000 cars a day and is a major corridor into the downtown and Western Kentucky University. I asked Mark Apsher, our city's traffic engineer, to attend on the city's behalf and get the details. Members from the transportation cabinet were also present. At this local meeting with CSX, CSX informed those in attendance of its plans to add an additional track line across Old Morgantown Road in order to provide a waiting area for passing trains. This need was due to the added length of trains that would be traveling our area, which is according to the CSX business plan. While on-site, CSX personnel witnessed for the first time the volume of traffic as well as the number of pedestrians that use the Old Morgantown Road crossing and quickly stated that they had no idea that the volume was so great. Mark, our traffic engineer, asked if other options could be explored, and the group moved on down to the Robinson Crossing. It was during this meeting with CSX at the Robinson Avenue Crossing that CSX offered an option that may possibly avoid blocking Old Morgantown Road by closing the right-of-way at Robinson Avenue. CSX representatives explained how they were under federal instruction to reduce the number of at-grade crossings to increase safety of the line, and they identified Robinson Avenue as a good candidate. While the meeting ended with some feeling that CSX might consider other options besides modifications of Old Morgantown Road, there were no guarantees at this time. It's important to remember that at this point, CSX already had a permit to do the work at Old Morgantown Road, and the materials were already on the site, ready for the work to Mark continued preliminary talks with CSX, trying to find areas outside of the city that would fit CSX's need and provide a passing area for the dual tracks, but there were no options that CSX was willing to consider due to the cost required to build that infrastructure. Still, at this time, there was no commitment from CSX to not block the Old Morgantown Road and possibly other intersections in the area. At this point, Mark contacted Mr. De Febo, who informed the Board of Commission what was occurring. At the next subsequent meeting of the Board of Commission, discussions were held with the group to determine the best practical and legal alternative to CSX actions that were being proposed. Staff was then instructed to meet with the CSX to learn what they wanted, what they were willing to give, and what they were willing to put into an agreement. Staff was told to come up with the best possible scenario that might keep Old Morgantown Road open and have the least negative impact on the community. Staff was further instructed to report back to the Board of Commission at the next meeting with the results of their meeting with CSX. It's important to note that at this point, CSX needed no approval from the city of Bowling Green. They are generally empowered to use the right-of-way any way they see fit. A meeting, as requested, was held with CSX, and they made it clear that they intended to extend the line at Old Morgantown Road unless an agreement could be reached to permanently close the Robinson Avenue Crossing. It must be remembered that permits were still in place for the work at Old Morgantown Road and materials were still on-site, and that they intended to move forward with this construction unless an agreement could be signed. The Robinson crossing closure was presented to the Board of Commission, who instructed staff to develop a final agreement that would require CSX to abandon the modifications proposed at Old Morgantown Road. In turn, the city would assist in the CSX closure of their crossing at Robinson by removing pavement, providing a turnaround, adding necessary landscape, and signage to prevent the crossing at CSX at Robinson Avenue. Then, with the technical help of the City-County Planning Commission, the CSX right-of-way closure agreement was finalized and voted on by the Board of Commission in the first meeting in April. It wasn't until this signed agreement was finalized that the city had surety that Old Morgantown Road would not be affected.
Thank you, Ms. Kanzler. I appreciate you giving us the point to where we are at this moment, and I'm going to offer the floor to people from the neighborhood that would like to speak, and I know Brian Howard is going to be our first commenter tonight, but I do want to reiterate again what I did, said in the other meeting when Mr. Howard was here. I personally apologize for not having more information out to you before tonight. It was nobody's fault but mine. When you take on a role in politics, you become the representative of the people who elected you there, and I failed you in that situation, so I offer my apology again, and we want to make sure that your comments are recorded here, and I know Ms. Perigin is not here tonight, but we're going to record those. She had already had a pre-planned vacation, and we didn't want to hold off any longer. We'll make sure she gets this recording so that she can see all of your comments as well. Brian Howard, please, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Ms. Kanzler, for the remarks here. Some of that's new information for us as we have continued to learn that. Let me first say, it's not my intention to be contentious at all tonight, nor do I want our words and our concerns to just kind of fall on deaf ears. I hope that we're not just here as crying over spilled milk. I don't think it's, I think it's a significant issue, and I don't know that significant time has been spent. I don't know. I honestly don't know how much time has been spent. I know a little bit, but I'm grateful for your labors, your willingness to hear us on this. Mayor Wilkinson, your apology meant a lot, and yet we still are in a situation where we feel like our hands are tied behind our backs as a neighborhood because we've not been represented, and we've not been heard, we've not had the chance to. Even just kind of going through the timeline there that just began in February, our first awareness of this was May 8th on a front-page story. That just doesn't seem right, and so, as I stated in the last time I was here, our hope was to get some clarity. There were some questions about what is unclear. There's quite a bit, I think, that's unclear. I've got a number of questions. There are a number of individuals in our neighborhood that have communicated to me that they could not be here tonight because of their previous plans. I think I've represented those in some of the questions and some of the comments that I want to offer tonight. I know that there's others that may want to speak as well. I think, as I've tried to form and come up with a way of articulating what the, just the seminal points of this issue are, is how far does the authority that the power of the railroad reach? I think everybody that lives in Cedar Ridge moved there knowing that there was a railroad. We hear it every day. We know it's there, but now to close what is not represented by a traffic count, the value of that road that everyone can speak to, it's significant. That is the way out of the subdivision. You can't go to the end of Creason and turn left legally. You can cut through the Western parking lot, which I would think that they're going to really not desire that to be a solution with the increased traffic. We already, to this day, we already see closures of that road, one to three hours. I don't think that's an exaggeration a day, and so, we're used to having to go the alternate route, and under the present situation now, we can leave Robinson and we can go to Emmett, and they are usually very well, it's very good about breaking the line or whatever to keep Emmett open. One question I have is, what arrangement has been made? If they're going to allow lines to be stored there and trains to be put there, what guarantee is there now that Emmett's going to be open? Has there any provision been made that that will take place? Because if that's cut off, then we have no Robinson, we have no Emmett, and we're left at that point to not get to the other side of the track except through the other circus we have to go. That's a concern, and we've tried to reach out to businesses. I spoke to a couple that were not even aware of this issue, that are on the other side of the tracks. Howchins has just spent a lot of money to redo their grocery store right there. I would think they would have a vested interest in this issue as well. Has anything been communicated? Have they been consulted? Have they been talked to just in a polite way to say this is what's happening? So, those are some, you know, initial questions here. What other solutions? I understand the Old Morgantown and the Emmett and the Robinson considerations. I would love to hear what other considerations were out there and what long-term solutions are there for this. One piece of information is that now the traffic, the road is going to be blocked, you know, it could be blocked five to six hours a day, and we just thought it would be better just to close that road than to block it five or six hours. I don't think there's anyone here that would opt for that as opposed to 24/7 forever closing that road. Again, we already deal with the blockage, and we figure that out. It's a part of living in the neighborhood. The issue of safety has been brought up in the paper and even in our last thing. I'm not sure how this makes it safer. I am not aware, I'm aware of one incident of a fatality there last year, and that was an individual who intentionally took their life that way. I'm not aware of any other information on that. I would love to be informed as to that.
There's been more.
Okay, I would love to see that documentation. I would love to see exactly what you're looking at. We, I've asked people who've lived in that neighborhood longer than I what they are aware of. They are not aware of anything either.
I've lived here all my life, and I can assure you, there's been more than one.
I'm just asking for documentation, sir.
The suicide was at Emmett?
Correct, correct. And I'm asking, I'm saying general, that area. I don't even know of anything at Robinson, so, I mean, anything that you have, I would love to see. I'm not aware of anything. I couldn't find anything. It's not easy to find that information for me, and others may have some information that I don't know of. The noise and safety issue is going to be a concern. We're essentially now, it seems, putting a railroad yard right next to our neighborhood. If they've got the authority to close a main road for us, they can put a fence up, they can do whatever they want to. I will say that driving down Creason right now along the greenway, that is one of the more undesirable places to drive down. What considerations have been made to guarantee that that's not going to turn into even bigger eyesore, I guess, is my concern. What is, is there going to be a fence there? Is there any precautions? Is there anything that regulates what kind of cars can be stored along that line? Dangerous hazard materials? That is a populated area. You've got Western that's right there. What was that considered? I don't know, but these are all questions that are there. I don't think simply closing that road is going to keep people from going across there. Now they'll go across there illegally, so I think the logical solution is going to be they're going to put some other kind of barrier there, which, again, continues to, in my estimation, devalue property values in what was once a very nice little neighborhood. So, that's there. I'm not even going to talk anymore about the greenway and the disruption of the aesthetics and that. That matters a whole lot to people in our neighborhood. It should matter to us as we look at that. And then, I would love to know if there are any other occurrences this on a national scale, locally in our state, where this action has taken place, where we see this precedent being set, and how that has taken place. There are a couple of statutes in Kentucky law that seem to be, that seem to be at odds with kind of the way this was handled, us not being aware of this. Again, from February to May, we knew nothing of this. The statutes that require us to kind of have a vested interest in that, as I read it, I'm not a lawyer, but seems like we were to be included in that. And then, the other concern is, again, we've not said any, I've not personally said anything about the blockage, but there is a Kentucky statute that regulates that that can even be taking place over five minutes at a time, and that certainly happens on a daily basis. So, that's a number of the questions and concerns that I have right there. I don't know how you want to answer. I don't know if you can answer, but those are serious concerns. And I just would love to know what other solutions. What are we supposed to do as citizens? I mean, we feel a lot like the bully that wants your milk, and you say, "Okay, well, here's your milk," and we can't fight, we can't say anything, we just have to kind of say, "Okay, we're here, just do whatever you want to do." And that just does not seem right, and it shouldn't seem, we just don't, we don't believe that's right, and we're just, we're speaking out against that. So, that's what I've got to say tonight.
Mr. Moore, did you want to take a moment to address any of those questions, if you can help us there?
Mayor, my name is Hamp Moore. I've been asked to take a look at the issues that are raised, and before I do that, I'd like to make sure everybody in the room understands that this issue is presently the subject of a lawsuit filed by one of the folks who live within a mile or so of this crossing, and in that lawsuit, there have joined as defendants in the lawsuit are the city of Bowling Green and also CSX. So, I'm a little bit nervous, I guess, about discussing matters that are subject to litigation, but having expressed my nervousness, I'm now going to launch in and just do that anyway. There were several issues which have been raised, and I'd like to respond to a couple of them, the ones at least that fall within things that I know about. And the first one is the power of the railroad to regulate its tracks and its use of crossings. It's a doctrine in the law called federal preemption, and it's simply stated, says that there are certain matters which have been preempted by the federal government, and one of those is the regulation of the railroads, and Major League Baseball's another one. But at any rate, federal preemption is a concept that is, that applies, and it stands for the proposition that notwithstanding state statutes that limit crossing blockages to five minutes, or city ordinances that do the same thing, notwithstanding ordinances that attempt to impose speed limits on trains moving through municipalities, the courts have said consistently, and I've looked and looked and looked for an exception to this, that cities and counties and states have no power to regulate an entity that is subject to the Interstate Commerce Commission Act of 1995, which vests in the Interstate Commerce Commission the power to regulate the railroad. And so, while cities and states have over the years passed ordinances and statutes that deal with how long a crossing can be blocked and what speed a train might use, those cases, when challenged, and they have, and they've even been challenged within this state and in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which has jurisdiction over the courts in this state, have consistently said that in this area, the Interstate Commerce Commission has jurisdiction. And so, I don't think that the city, or the state of Kentucky for that matter, has the power to regulate the times that these crossings may be blocked or the speeds that the trains use. So, there's point one. The second thing that I heard mentioned has to do with whether or not there was some process that should have been followed to close this crossing, and that's a good question. One that I know was addressed by the city staff as well as the Planning Commission, and it was their considered opinion that this, the closing of the Robinson Lane Crossing did not constitute a road closing under KRS 82.405, and so, that procedure in KRS 82 could not be followed. And let me see if I can explain to you why I don't think that, why I don't think it applies. That statute very narrowly requires that property owners adjacent to the roadway to be closed must express consent or have a lawsuit filed in order to, in effect, condemn the property for the road closing. In this case, the, if everybody will imagine the crossing of Robinson Lane at the CSX tracks, it is a rectangle that has four, of course, has four sides. Two of the sides are Robinson Lane, property owned by the city. The other two sides is property that is owned by CSX by virtue of a master commissioner's deed back in the 1850s, in which the L and N Railroad took a commissioner's deed to the property on which their tracks sit. So, the point of that, of describing that rectangle to you is to say that the consent necessary to close the right-of-way would come from the city of Bowling Green and the CSX, not from any of the adjoining property owners. And moreover, and I think even more importantly, it is the fact that if the CSX owns the property on which its tracks sit, and if CSX has granted to the public the right to cross at grade, and if CSX has the power to terminate that right-of-way crossing, which I believe they do, then there's nothing for the city to close. The closure is one that has been decided upon by CSX. And so, I hope I've added a little bit to your understanding of this issue. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, in other words, we can't tell CSX that they can close their own property?
I agree with that statement.
And it add to that, there was an agreement, I think you mentioned it, a legal document, an agreement between CSX or its L and N predecessor. For the city of Bowling Green, you may use our tracks and cross over them. And if I understand it right, that contract has been brought to the city of Bowling Green that is saying that we want to terminate that contract we have with you because we want to do something else with our property.
I have not seen that right-of-way agreement. I've requested it from CSX, but it is my belief that CSX has the right to terminate that right-of-way and terminate the crossing privilege.
That apply to all CSX crossings?
You know, Mayor, I suppose since crossing agreements were negotiated and worked out at different times over a long history, that probably there's a great deal of variation in that, and so, that's why I can't speak specifically to this one or to the others other than to ask the folks from CSX, and I've done so, to try to find those in Jacksonville, Florida, where they are headquartered, and to try to give us evidence of what we believe to be the case.
Okay.
And I want to, I want to also, while clearly the focus of tonight's discussion is on Robinson Lane and its intersection with the CSX, I know you all remember, and I think all of us in the room have to remember, that nobody wanted to close the Robinson Lane Crossing. It was the presentation of two railroad tracks that were going to be constructed within the city limits, and an attempt to try to balance between the Old Morgantown Road Crossing and all of the traffic that it generates, and the pedestrians that regularly use that crossing every day, and trying to balance what is in the best interest of the entire city. And unfortunately, you can't please everybody all of the time, and that was the balancing that had to take place.
Ms., can you come on, come up to the microphone so we can all hear you?
Yeah, I have a general question, Mr. Moore. So, if I understand this right, adjacent properties, they own their, so Dance Images, the Gables, that apartment complex, the Waffle House, none of that really matters because they're technically, I guess, not adjacent enough?
The case law is that in order for those property owners that don't touch the right-of-way to be closed, don't have to consent. You do not have to get permission from property owners that do not touch the piece of property that is in question, in this case, that rectangle that is the crossing. And so, Dance Images and the properties that are effectively up at the intersection of Creason and back at the intersection of Russell Road and Robinson Lane, because they don't touch the property, would, under KRS 82, not be entitled to either grant or deny consent.
Want to make sure that we have an opportunity- Want to make sure that we have an opportunity for everybody that wants to bring ideas or opinions or comments to us, has that opportunity. So please, please step forward.
Mark Bowling, 1843 Cedar Ridge Road. Do we have a representative here from CSX?
Not that I know of.
Could we get a copy of Ms. Councillor's remarks, just to, so we could sort of see the progression?
Sure. And these comments will be posted on the city's website for if some of the people in the neighborhood are out of town or on vacation, they can click on it at their convenience and it will be replayed at that time.
I read in the paper that Mr. De Febo had said that they would not consider, or I don't really understand it, so maybe you can address this, that they didn't want to be in hinterland?
Hinterland, outside the city.
And so I guess the CSX just didn't want to be a good corporate citizen and cloud that?
I don't want to go, I don't want to go to motive, but our attempt was to try to move their parking lanes outside the city so as no one would be imperiled. Hinterland may have been an awkward term. It's a term used quite a bit in the north to mean
We're not in the north.
Environs, rural area, hinterlands, so it was
I know what you meant.
Okay.
So, but, so conceivably, this would, there could be enough track in this community to not affect any traffic if they wanted to park trains somewhere where there were not any road crossings.
I'm not an expert at this, so.
Well, I'm not either, you can tell that.
Mark, there would have to be two parallel tracks for what they're trying to do. And as you know, those two parallel tracks currently exist where we're talking about, from Old Morgantown Road to the Memphis Junction Yard.
So can we say that there are no other parallel tracks anywhere that this could be done without a road crossing?
Not in Bowling Green. My understanding they have parallel tracks.
You know what I'm talking about, you know? And I understand what you mean about hinterland.
We were trying to get it out of the city.
Right.
If you want to look up there on the screen, I think Melissa can speak to it. She put together this with staff. I believe the purple represents the existence of two, where there's double tracks now? Melissa?
Yes.
We put this together.
The purple highlighted that runs through all those crossing locations in yellow is the double, what exists today. And if you go up to Old Morgantown Road, it stops just shy of that, which is where they intended to lay that double track across the Old Morgantown Road Crossing.
No, I understand that. So this is the only place in Warren County they could do this? Is that what they're telling you?
Yes.
Well, I think they're trying to do it rather than build a two-and-a-half-mile section of parallel track. Now, that's my guess. But it's also, in discussions that we've had with CSX, they are building other parallel tracks at other locations, one in Cave City, one further north, and one down near Franklin. So this is not the only one that they're doing. But I'm sure, I'm sure there's a cost factor involved here.
Do you think, do you think that the acceptance of $50,000 to the city makes this sort of look bad? Aren't they going to give you $50,000 to get this done?
Well, I think there's a mis, I think there's always been a misperception of what that $50,000 was for. And I think, and I agree with you, it does look bad the way it was presented. But the $50,000, it's going to cost the city something to have to do all the things that they're going to have to do at Robinson, to tear up the blacktop, to build the turnarounds, to put up the barriers, and that's what, that's what this money's intended to do.
Okay. The only other comment I would make is that I travel Creason, well, when I have to. Creason is a dangerous street as it is today. People go too fast, it's a little curvy, not curbed and guttered, and we have the greenways sidewalk on the side. I think the city should consider making that a safer street.
I agree.
I would be scared to walk on the greenways there, just because it's that close to the road. And I think everybody's traveled that.
Staff, if I could be so bold, staff has put together, Melissa has put together some thoughts to how to improve that. Would you be interested in seeing some of those thoughts?
Absolutely.
Okay, Melissa, would you please?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have any exhibits for, to hit necessarily the safety factor if you're looking at it from a speed aspect, but we did look at helping the intersection of Emmett and Creason with, again, this is just a concept, but possibly adding a turn lane there to help alleviate some of the backup, I understand, that happens at Creason along Emmett. So if you add a left turn lane, and then also adding a right turn lane onto Creason in that area. So those are some things that, because both of those are city streets, we could easily look at that alternative and see what that would cost to help that intersection to move people. As I understand it from our traffic engineer, there are some problems there today. So I'm trying to blow that up a little bit here. All right, I don't know if you can see that or not, but let me. There, is that a little bit better? I won't pan all the way out because I think you get the idea. We have a right turn lane here, potentially on Emmett, and then kind of separate those movements coming out of Creason. So say somebody stopped waiting for a train and somebody wants to come left, you'll be able to get out there.
Can I ask a question? One of the questions that I had was, what guarantee do we have that Emmett won't be blocked every time now?
No, if you look at the last bulletin on this piece of paper, it says Emmett will be blocked too. It's really not a certainty.
That's a concern. And there was no, I mean, I feel like we just kind of, I feel like we just kind of said, okay. And we didn't even ask for any, there's no guidance, there's, I mean, is there anything? I mean, can you say, okay, you're going to take this road away, but can you leave this one? They break trains there, they can do that. We've got evidence that they break trains. But we have no guarantee that that road's going to be open. And our only option out to go to that side of town is to go back out and come down around by the movie theater, go over the overpass, and come down to the Hardee's and wait in that traffic, and then to come down. Or to go make the illegal turn and the fine officers of Bowling Green will be there waiting, or there'll be accidents there. It happens now. Not to mention the increased traffic on already roads that need some repair in our neighborhood because people are going to come there. We're sitting on an island now. There's issues. And I'm just kind of saying, that's, a turn lane would be great, but we're just going to sit there and wait on that train that there's no regulation, and it could sit there all day.
I want to say I personally agree with you. I live there. I know exactly what you're talking about. Emmett, Emmett is not guaranteed that it won't be blocked. The only thing that we've heard from CSX is that they will hopefully try to use their other crossings, or their other sidings that they're building north and south of Bowling Green, as much as they can, and not block this crossing. But as you've heard stated, the law is that the cities don't have control over anything having to do with how long the trains are, how fast the trains run, where they park on their tracks. So, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying. I have to, I have to deal with this too. So don't think that what you have to say is falling on deaf ears.
I mentioned that 22 years ago, CSX approached the city of Bowling Green about closing three or four of the east-west streets, including Robinson, and others here in town. At that particular time, Johnny Webb, Johnny Oldham, Carol McIver, and Robbie Bond, and I, we let them know that we wouldn't be interested in having those closures in the city of Bowling Green. It was several, over a period of time, it was, it was three or four. We let Jacksonville know that we weren't interested in that because we would have a situation where no one could go west, or if they were on the west side, they certainly couldn't come back east towards downtown. So the point I guess I'm making is we've gone from four or five down to one as far as a crossing.
Good evening. My name's Katina Minor. I'm new to Bowling Green, or relatively new. I moved here two years ago. I live at 1810 Craig Street, so all this history is news to me. A couple of questions and one remark. I actually am brave enough to run down Creason Street, and I use the greenway. I like this idea because it is a scary street. One of my remarks is, we've talked about Western, we've talked about our neighborhood. We also have McNeil School very close to this area. That's where my daughter goes. I know there are other children, parents in this room who go there, who went there. What studies have been done regarding the traffic impact that will happen to the car pickup line and the backups that already occur in this area if Robinson Road is closed? I think that could be very significant. I also understand your remarks that were hamstrung, and this feels unjust. I'm disappointed that no one from CSX is here, but I do think that some studies should be done, and there should be some pressure put on them. I hope they'll listen to these remarks because I am concerned about the traffic and the safety, in particular, for the younger school kids, some of whom are walking back and forth along these roads. Thank you.
And I might say, and we'd all like to see a bunch of representatives from CSX here, but as Hampton mentioned earlier, there is litigation that is currently in place, and they probably have chosen not to be here because of that litigation.
None of Bowling Green's independent school district is on the other side of the railroad track for this school, is it?
Uh, no, that school district's not over there.
Spring Hill is, but it's
It doesn't go to McNeil.
Does the double track go all the way to Campbell Lane is one of the questions.
Yeah, it goes to Memphis Junction.
Oh, so it goes all the way through there?
Yep.
So there is an overpass there?
There's an overpass there.
Might be that not being considered?
Is there not enough room, I guess the question is, from Emmett South to do what they're trying to do?
I guess, I know a lot about trains, so I'm not holding them up or tearing them down, but I'll tell you this. From Emmett Drive, if they have the nose of a locomotive at Emmett Drive, and the tail of the train where it clears the switch now as it stands at Old Morgantown Road, that's a mile and a half. If CSX plans are to run two-mile-long trains, and they're not going across Old Morgantown Road, then the extension of the head of that train is going to be further south. So that's why, you know, it could be blocked all the way out, just depending on how long the train is.
Yeah, I understand that. The other question that is brought up, if the city was able to stop them and make such a strong statement the last time that they tried to do this, then what prohibits that, what's changed to do that now? I guess is the question, you know?
I would say the numbers, you know, they, as I mentioned, they, and I'm the only one that was here, so I know.
The numbers being what numbers?
Numbers of crossings that they wanted to close. They were talking about four crossings going across their tracks, including Main Street up where Neihaw Bottling Company is at now, and a couple more south. And we said, no. I mean, we'd close Bowling Green down. We had four crossings going west and east across the railroad track.
And a lot of this changed in the 90s, 95, is that right, Hampton?
That's the date of the act.
It just, I think one of the things that's disturbing is that when you have all the power that the railroad has, and maybe I'm not saying anything here, then you don't look for creative ways to solve solutions, it seems. You just say, this is what we're going to do, and you don't have to show up to meetings, and you don't have to do that. That's disturbing. And it seems that, do we have a greater voice if our city comes alongside of us and says, no, this is, we want to fight this? Is there anything worth fighting here? Do we have anything there? And I think that's just, you know, I agree with the comments, Creason is dangerous after school hours. The help of putting a turn lane into McNeil increased the speed of the cars that could go down the other lane. There are going to be other issues that are going to, the repercussions of this, I don't know how far they reach, and I'm wondering what consideration has been given to that. Also, do we have any regulations on what kind of cars they can set there? So they can put hazardous materials or whatever along those lines?
Well, it's, I don't think that they have any plans to park trains there and leave them, you know, without power. That's going to be a passing track. So it's the trains that are already running up and down the tracks now. They have to, they have to pull a train over to let another one pass. So, I mean, that's what we have there now, it's the same thing.
They're not building another line there?
No, there's no new line being built.
But so they're just going to use the existing line, and that's going to become kind of a stationary line?
There are two tracks there now.
Right.
And from time to time, you'll see trains pass on those, on those tracks.
All the time.
If they're, what they're going to do is park longer trains.
Mr. Thompson, come on up.
I feel like I'm speaking for CSX, I'm not. I just, I'm just
I'm not going to ask any questions, I'm just going to make a statement. First, you say you're not closing the road when you're tearing the pavement up in the road and putting turn lanes and flower beds in the middle of the road. That's known as closing a road. Secondly, these tankers that carry this hazardous material are known as tanker bombs. They have blown up last week in Oregon, last year in West Virginia, the year before that in Virginia, in the middle of a town, and these are dangerous frac oil tanker bombs. That's what they call it. The New York Times has called it a tanker bomb going through our cities. Third, I challenge Mr. Moore to show me one case in the United States, even since 1995, where a city has been closed by their road that they have used for 60 years by the railroad. I couldn't find one, maybe he has found one. He can tell us where that road is. But you have closed this road, you have closed it against the state law, you have taken money, you've done this in secret, in secret. The agenda for the night you pass this said approval of a crossing closure agreement with CSX Railroad, and you didn't even mention Robinson Road. Now, come on, our city government, 22 years ago, our city government had some guts, and I ask you to have some guts and repeal this law and make CSX come get us and take our closing away.
I'm Michelle Bowling, and I live at 1843 Cedar Ridge Road, and I've lived there for close to 30 years, maybe, give or take. So I've seen a lot of things happen in the neighborhood, I've been around as long as Joe Denning has. And a few years ago, there was a situation which some of you all may remember, where the Kentucky Transportation Department handed over the keys the Kentucky Transportation Department handed over the keys to University Boulevard to WKU. And WKU decided, "Well, now that it's ours, we're going to turn it one way and we'll put Angle Park in there." And that was all a done deal. And then, they told the neighbors. And I remember talking to a friend, a former state legislator by the name of Dr. Nick Kofoglis, and he told me that anything that has been done can be undone if it's not right. CSX may have this power, they may have the authority, but it's not right. There are other alternatives. Perhaps they have to build another extension to their line. Maybe they need a, a few hundred or a half a mile more of, of triculate in order to get that length going out past Memphis Junction. There are ways to do this. Nobody is thinking creatively. The only people that have been thought about in this situation are, well, I don't even know that anybody thought about the people who are the citizens of Bowling Green. You know, the west side of the tracks, it's not a secret, everyone knows, it's, it's economically disadvantaged, and this is a business area along Russellville Road in that zone that is, is, you see an uptick. But you know what? They need the dollars from the people who live on the east side of the track. I just think there are so many reasons why the people in this room and our elected officials in Bowling Green should be supporting us and taking CSX to task for not thinking a little more creatively and finding a way to take care of the things that they need done without having all of these various and many negative impacts on the city. The city and its citizens are going to be paying out tax money to mitigate every single problem that this creates, and $50,000 isn't going to touch it, not to mention the inconvenience and even possible business failures along that zone. I just think everything about this is very unfortunate, and I'm really disappointed in my city leaders for not having taken a stronger stand on the behalf of the city of Bowling Green, not just the citizens who live in Cedar Ridge neighborhood, but the businesses along that area, the schoolchildren that attend McNeil School. I'm just, I'm really, really disappointed in it. I would like to see us take another look, and I would like us to challenge CSX to think a little harder about their other possible alternatives. Thank you.
If anybody else has a comment or an idea for us?
I'm Jim Houston. I live on Sumter, in the neighborhood. I've just got a couple of questions, a couple of ideas. One, I, you know, I don't want us to get defensive, you get defensive, but it becomes that kind of thing. But I'm sure you know better than, or as well as we do, the changes in traffic flow to our neighborhood in the last few years, that have already taken place, that we can't turn left onto University Boulevard. Lansdale can't get out of our neighborhood anymore because of the success of the roundabout. There's hours every day where you can't go in and out of Lan, of Lansdale. Normal has been improved, but now it's basically a university road, which means we have no access to even get to Chestnut Street. We can't get to it directly on Normal, we can't get to it from the bypass anymore. We're being cut off, probably five or six different streets have been cut off for our traffic flow. So, when this came and we, we had no preparation for it, no understanding what was going on, it raised a lot of concerns. If, in fact, this is being done because CSX, it's, it's a business move for them, they want longer trains to make more profit, I understand profit, I understand business success, what I don't understand is why we're paying for them to improve their business. Why aren't they building another track somewhere? Why are they affecting our property values? Why are they affecting all the businesses up and down Russellville Road? We've seen that area come back a bit lately, and it looked like there was good things going to happen there, and suddenly you're shutting off a whole neighborhood that shops over there. We can't get to the IGA, we can't get to those businesses. So, all those are reasons why I think we're concerned, but the, the real question I have is, with all this talk, we still have no idea what's really going on there. What is really going on there? We had been told they were going to be building another track. Now, we're being told they're not building another track. We've been told there's going to be switching and turnarounds. What does that mean, switching and turnarounds? Well, you don't know either. Who knows?
No, I think, I think there's been a lot of misinformation about it.
So, can you tell us?
People have used, people have used improper terminology. The only reason I understand it is because I know about trains. It's, it's, it's a hobby of mine. I just know what they're doing. But the, the original plan, if I can make it really simple, there is a switch that is just south of Old Morgantown Road. Right now, there's one track that comes across Old Morgantown Road. Trains hit that switch, and then it becomes double track and goes all the way to the CSX yard at Memphis Junction. They wanted to extend that switch. I don't, I can't draw on, on the computer up here, so. They wanted to extend and put that switch on the other side of Old Morgantown Road. So, the only track that was being built was from where there's a switch now, which was going to be removed. They were going to run two tracks across Old Morgantown Road and put in a switch on the north side that extended the length of the parallel track that it, that currently exists. That's the only construction that they were going to do. But we were alarmed at, at the possibility of all the traffic that was going to be interfered with and the safety issues at Old Morgantown Road. Because when you have a parked train, especially in a situation like that, you're going to have college students, they're going to do whatever they have to do to get to class, get through that train. If there's a parked train there, they're going to go under it, over it, through it, whatever they have to do to get to the other side. If it's on the inside track, they can't see that traffic on the outside track. And I know that eventually there's going to be a fatality because of that configuration. It was going to be very, very dangerous at Old Morgantown Road. As I said earlier, I live in the affected area here. I am not happy with this, but I do feel like my hands are tied by law, and that's the only reason that we're here.
Okay. I'm, I'm slow, and I understand what was going to happen at Old Morgantown Road crossing.
Right.
I'm still asking, what is going to be different in our neighborhood? What are they going to be doing differently from what they have been doing?
They're just going to, it's going to be closed, and there's going to be a train parked there a lot of times. With longer trains, that's going to be blocked. I don't know how much longer than it is now, but it's, it's going...
There's not any new switching, any new, anything going on? They're just parking there longer?
That's correct.
Thank you for that, because what we read in the paper doesn't really make that any more, more clear for us. And so, basically, we're affecting Bowling Green, particularly our neighborhood, rather than have CSX pay their own way for, for improving their profits. That's basically what we're doing. We're making it easier for them to make more money at our expense, seems to me.
I think with longer trains, they were going to block it anyway. Just my opinion.
And, and how do we get in and out of our neighborhood if we keep losing access?
We talk about preliminary studies, the traffic study?
We're, we're trying to find some alternatives, but I, I don't...
But we're going to close it before we have alternatives.
That's, that's why I didn't, that's...
That's right. Okay. So, we're going to create more problems before we...
We're not in any rush to do it. We, we're not.
When is it going to happen?
I don't know that a date's been set.
So, when the students come back, it's going to be happening?
At Robinson?
That was, that was, that's what it said in the paper. It's had to be done, it all had to be done by all of the students.
Well, the, we don't know about, we're hoping that nothing's going to happen at Old Morgantown Road.
No. I... But Emmett is rough.
I know. If they go to two-mile-long trains, it's going to be impossible for Emmett not to be blocked. That's, that's a fact.
So, how do we get out of our neighborhood?
We go across Campbell Lane. I have to live with that, too. I know exactly what you're, what you're thinking.
Good evening. Rebecca Simpson, Rebecca Adams Simpson, I'll say. I grew up on Sumter Avenue, returned to Sumter Avenue, and now live on Cedar Ridge, so I've lived in this neighborhood almost my entire life. Just want to ask, and it's really reiterating a couple of questions that have already been brought this evening. Has the city considered how to handle the pickup and drop-off line at McNeil Elementary School? Because it's already a problem as it is, and clearly with this closing of, of Robinson and, and occasionally, if not often, Emmett, that's going to be exacerbated. And likewise, on the west side, when the, the road that comes into the university, there's already traffic backup, especially when Western's in session. Has the city contemplated how to handle that and how this closure is going to exacerbate that traffic prob, already existing traffic problem as well?
Before we go, where, where's the second issue that you're talking about?
When Russellville Road feeds into University Boulevard, I don't know if you've tried to navigate that, especially at, in the morning hours, rush hours. It's already backed way up Russellville Road. Sometimes it's impossible to get in and out, or, or very delayed to get in and out. Naturally, some traffic right now can turn off onto Robinson and Emmett, but that's going to be blocked off. So, that, that flow of traffic from University onto Russellville that goes under the underpass is going to be further blocked off.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood where you were talking.
It's already dangerous. I mean, I've seen, I've seen people get into close acci, you know, close to getting to, into accidents there already. And then, more importantly, or equally as importantly, is Ms. Minor's question to the council is how to increase safety on Creason and address the issue of the McNeil Elementary students, also bearing in mind that we have Warren Central traffic that's going to be flowing at the same time during the mornings and afternoons when school's in session. So, we have Warren Central, WKU, and McNeil, all in this centralized location.
Hi, my name is Aaron McCormick. I live on Cedar Ridge also. I lived on Sumter whenever I was in, in college and loved the neighborhood, so decided to buy a house in that area. I think what everyone here is concerned about is you, you are not telling us what you are going to do as the city to benefit us. If they have to close Robinson, that's fine, but can you not take eminent domain on Western? Can you not change things in Egypt and change the way the road ends so that we can at least have access to get out of our neighborhood?
It's an excellent question, and all I can tell you is that we're in negotiations with the state about looking at that intersection. Their funds are limited as well, but keep in mind that that's US 68 and, and can, US 231, they're state highways. We don't have control over them either, but we are working on, on a solution. But it's not a near-term solution, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, a solution would have been good before the agreement was made.
Yes, sir, I agree. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, Tony Harkins, 1900 Cedar Ridge. My question is on the timing and on what, what this, what the vision is going forward. What is the timetable on this? When do we start seeing pictorial representations of what it's going to look like? You're tearing up the, the road, how much, are you tearing up the entire road between Russellville and Creason? Or, I just have, you know, I continue to wonder exactly what's happening and when it's going to happen. I understand there's a lawsuit, maybe that affects the timing of it, but just what, whatever your sense is of that, it would be helpful to know. Thank you.
Counselor, do you have anything to add on that? preamble this draft, please.
Just a minute. Mark Apsher, our traffic engineer, did prepare something very preliminary, too. And again, this is something that Mark put together. I think it, it was brought up during the talks initially with CSX when they started looking at the crossing closure. Bear with me just a minute and get this oriented for you. All right. I don't know if everybody can see. Dance Arts, I believe, is right here. This, if you're heading toward the bottom of the page, you're heading towards, or maybe backwards, no. Bottom of the page is Creason, and then if you cross towards the top of the page, you're heading towards Russellville Road. What Mark has shown here is basically when CSX closes their roadway, which is the area that we have not shaded because we're not allowed to touch that area. We would be responsible, per the agreement, to come up with some barrier. And what we've shown here is removal of asphalt in the green. We've shown from the Creason side what we call a hammerhead to provide if people do turn down that way, a, a way to do a three-point turnaround. Of course, there will be signs up on each end, as with any dead-end street, notifying people that it does end there. We're adding end-of- roadway signs, some nice landscape, which the city will maintain, and some asphalt curbing. I assume that the talk with CSX, this was satisfactory to them, and the agreement that this was considered what they call a barrier in the agreement, because they will be responsible for anything inside of their roadway, which is roughly between the top shaded green and the, and the bottom shaded green spot. And again, this is preliminary. It's not a pretty rendering of what it will look like, but in concept, that's the intention.
All we're asking for is that you be like the city commissioners of 22 years ago and fight them and make them take it from us, and ask your lawyers to show you cases where railroads have closed city roadways, which have been used for 60 years inside of city limits, where they have come in and said, "We're going to block these roads if you don't close it," because they haven't done it anywhere else. Make them prove it in court.
I just want to ask a quick question, because I know this, this really goes back to something, I'm sorry. This goes back to something that Hant Moore said, that this, the city and state really didn't have much control. This was more, the only person that had some control over this would be federal. Has the city consulted with our federal representatives just to see if we can get some assistance working with CSX to get some more creative solutions here? You know, I think we have good representatives in Congress, and maybe that is something that we should really be looking at. If we don't have a stick in, as a city or a state to address this, has anybody talked to Brett Guthrie about it?
I have not, ma'am.
It's just a, I mean, you know, you got to work with what you've got. I just really feel like we have, we haven't explored enough, enough alternatives before we said okay.
No one, yes? John, yes?
Ms. Shadwin, and I live at 1927, and I have for 50 years. When we talk about the traffic, is there any consideration for when the Western athletics, I mean, there will be no way to get in and out?
You talking about the softball and, and soccer fields there?
No, I'm, I'm talking about football games, basketball games, softball games. The traffic from there should be considered, because it's already, uh, difficult. But this will make it very hard. And I think that's something we should be considering, too.
Thank you, Ms. Shadwin. Okay, I wanna make sure everyone's had a chance to add their comments. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mrs. Anna Moore, and I live at 300 Sumter Avenue, right next door to McNeil Elementary School.
Mm-hmm.
So you know, on a daily basis, I see the traffic. And having been, my driveway is located right there on Creason. It's difficult enough to get in and out of my driveway. I think that this is a very, very selfish consideration from CS, CSX. I think that you all have not, or somebody has not thought this all the way through. The community has depended upon that excess for years. For 17 years, I worked at Bristow Elementary School, and I had to use Robinson to get out of that area, because I couldn't turn left onto University. If you do this, this will totally inconvenience our community. $50,000 for whatever it's worth. I feel like that it should be added to the taxes that we pay yearly to help really overcome this situation. And I hope that you all will find a solution to solve this problem. Thank you.
Ed Jaeger, 355 Maryland. And in light of all the concerns raised this afternoon, I would respectfully submit that we request a representative from CSX at a meeting not long from now. Perhaps CSX can receive a transcript from this meeting with the concerns that have been raised, so that they have some time to put together their response to, to the concerns raised this, this afternoon. And also, if they could identify the options that they had considered before settling on this one, so that they're prepared to provide greater disclosure of their decision-making process, I, I think that would benefit all of us.
Anyone else? Got anyone off? All right, then. I, I appreciate your coming. I wish I could tell you with more, couldn't, I wish I had a more definitive answer to give you to some of the questions you had tonight. Some of them will, will have to be worked out in court, and I expect that to come pretty soon. I can't speak for the court system and how that operates. I understand it's been that CSX has asked for it to be remanded to federal court. McKinley? We will take your comments, and we'll make sure that they're made available for... Yeah, the, the hearing or trial, or whatever it turns out to be, will be in, in Bowling Green in front of Federal Judge McKinley. And we'll make sure all of these comments are made available to, to everyone involved. Yes, Ms. Bowling, one more time? That would be something for the city to consider. You know, the fact that we're, we're in, I'm sorry? I, I understand that something we'll have to make a determination with, with our attorneys and our, in that, in consultation with our attorneys, that that, I'll, I'll leave it at that comment there. But I understand what you're saying. Thank you. Anyone else? I, I truly appreciate your coming. I wish I had a different outcome for you and a different information situation to provide. As it becomes known, we will make every effort to provide you with the information that comes, comes along. If you'll, we had a, a... We can establish a website, if that would be helpful. That, that might be if we had a link on our, on our website, or if you have a, if you wanted a particular email address provided. Karen is here up front, one of, one of your neighbors as well. Make sure that she has your email and his information is disseminated. We'll, we'll make sure it gets to you directly. Okay? Thank, thank you again so much for coming, and I appreciate your comments here.